Welcome back to the Lone Star Collective, the official podcast of the Texas Cannabis Collective. I'm your host, Chris Grusolia, and I'm joined this week by my co-host and our special guest, my co-host, Austin Zambruri, and our special guest, Bentley Pies. He's a candidate for Kamau County Commissioner. Welcome, y'all.
Thank you for having me.
How's everybody doing today?
Doing pretty good. How are you?
Pretty good for, for early Saturday morning. Uh, this is a, not very often we do a Saturday show, but this is a great way to start the day. So Bentley, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, basically, my name's Bentley Pies. Um, I previously ran for New Braunfels City Council in District Five. But before that, I worked for a handful of congressional campaigns for US Congress and some local city council races, school board, all of that. Um, and I was also the former president of the Kamau County Young Democrats. So I've had quite a bit of time to reach out to people and figure out what platforms I want to support and stand for. And one of them happened to be supporting the decriminalization of marijuana in the state of Texas. And that was one thing that I was running for, um, or one of my platforms when running for city council. And I hope to bring that to, uh, my run on Kamau County Commissioner.
Okay, cool, cool. Austin, you kind of invited this guest, so I'm kind of going to let you lead the, lead the show on, on questions and stuff. Uh,
Sure, Bentley, uh, just real quick, if you can, give us your experience on what it was like to run for, was it city council?
Yes, sir. Um, so that was definitely an interesting experience. Um, when I announced, um, at that time, there was never any candidates in this district that ran against someone. They were always winning unopposed. Um, and for the races where people did try and get people out from this district, not many showed up. It was around 300 in the past elections before this one. And so we definitely had a steep hill to climb along with me being the only candidate who has threatened to call out their corruption, um, and this, the backroom deals that they do on city council that the people don't know about and the stuff they're trying to hide. And so they definitely did all they could to make sure that they didn't get someone like that on there. But, um, it was definitely an interesting experience. I got to meet a ton of people and walk all over the district and learn so much. Um, and win or lose, I, either way, it's a good experience and I'm happy to be a part of the community and help as much as I can.
What would you say were some of the local issues that, that people were concerned about?
Um, some of the main issues were the rising cost of living. Um, New Braunfels is a tourist town, so constantly every summer, there's an influx of tourists coming in. Um, personally, I live next to Schlitterbonn, so it's tons of people coming in all throughout the summer. And I guess people just concern, oh, it's absolutely terrible. Um, and I guess the biggest concern that people had was that people were going to be kicked out, that there's new people coming in to take their place. And it's a real concern because a lot of people in lower income areas, like the area I live in, people are being pushed out and new people from California are coming in and they're gentrifying these low-income neighborhoods and pushing out the generational residents. Along with that, um, we also don't have any public transportation system. So I personally believe that in a growing town like this, we have like a very small gap where we can figure out what we want to do about that. And that's what I was trying to do. Um, and I'd say one of the other issues was protecting our environment. Um, when those tourists come around every year, there tends to be a lot more trash in the rivers and in our parks. So, um, standing up for that along with calling out corporations or businesses who pollute our environment and all that.
I will say that there is a nice transit system to get from one, the old park of Schlitterbonn to the new park at Schlitterbonn. That's about the only transit I think exists.
Yeah, but you have to be wearing one of their bands.
Right, and they've got like five or six of those things just constantly rolling. And so I don't, you know, if, if Schlitterbonn can do it, I don't see why the city, New Braunfels will, yeah, put something together like that.
Yeah, that's the way I see it. If we want to keep up with these tourists coming in, we might as well build the infrastructure to keep up with it.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so, so how was the message, let's, let's bring this back to cannabis. How was the message of decriminalizing cannabis? Um, how was that received by, you know, people that you were talking to in New Braunfels?
Um, it was definitely interesting. Um, it was one of those topics where a lot of, like, you couldn't really tell. They read the card, they're like, oh, that's the top one I see, uh, this one caught my eye. Um, but a lot of Republicans and Democrats all support decriminalizing marijuana or legalizing it. Um, just making it not a felony or where you get in trouble if you get caught with it. Um, I was able to, well, let me go back a little bit. Um, when I was working with the young Democrats, we did our best to try and work with the young Republicans as well so we can bring both sides together and focus on the issues that affect us most. Um, and one of those issues being people being incarcerated for the possession of marijuana. And both the young Republicans and Democrats agreed on that, that there's no reason people should be going to jail for having a joint with them or having a pen or something. Um, along with that,
It's generally popular opinion among all, it doesn't matter party affiliation. I mean, as far as the public goes, but yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no worries. Uh, the unfortunate part is that our district attorney, Jennifer Tharp, and, um, the sheriff's department worked side by side to incarcerate people with the possession of marijuana and profit off of it. Um, their main targets are low-income people of color. Um, so they're easily able to throw the book at them. And she claims she's tough on crime, but only because those are the only people she's able to get. Um, and they're the only people they target. Um, recently during my run, there was a handful of kids who I think got 30 years in prison because they were caught with a pen, which is absolutely ridiculous. Um, I went to an alternative school, um, so I can graduate early. And that school ended up having a lot of troubled kids who tend to go towards marijuana usage, um, and all that. And those kids, just like that, have their lives ruined and have no chance of a future after they get incarcerated. And so I just felt like it was deeply important and I tried to push that message along with the usage that our veterans, uh, use marijuana when they come back and it helps with their PTSD or suffering that they're going through. Yeah. I guess it just depends on the person and what message you want to push to them to get into their head.
Right, and what, what, what we're finding is that really, uh, really, really across the state, there's, uh, general consensus that this is an issue that the majority of people support, whether it's in the big urban areas or it's in the smaller suburban areas or even in rural areas. We're finding that people, people all around generally support some kind of reform, whether it's expansion of medical access, whether it's, you know, decriminalizing, reducing penalties. Uh, and then most people would be shocked to find that, I would say, the, you know, the majority of people, uh, so full out support a legalized retail, regulated market in the state. And it's unfortunate that sometimes it gets caught in the crosshairs of political dynamics and that you have, you know, eh, politics where, uh, one, uh, candidate or one, uh, party may kind of point fingers at the other one and saying, this is, you know, this is their fault or, or, uh, if we do this, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna give them a, a victory. And, uh, what we, I think what we all need to come to realize is that both parties, all sides of America are responsible for 100 years of marijuana prohibition, for the destructive nature of the war on drugs, that this isn't a single isolated, um, political side, that everybody is responsible. And we, we all have to take that, um, that part of our history, that part of the system and try to, and try to, and try to change it. And this is the one thing that we all agree on, you know what I'm saying? Like, we don't all agree on everything. There's, it's very rare that you find one thing that everybody's like, oh, yeah, that's, you know, I'm all about that. Uh, but this is,
This is one of those things, yeah.
Absolutely, and so, um, you know, just kudos to you for, for not only having the courage. How old are you again Bentley?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Wow, so, um, you know, it, that, having that, kudos to you for having that drive and ambition to want to be a beacon of change in, in not only your community, but just in the greater state of Texas and, um, having the courage to go through all of the headache and stress of running a campaign. Um, but I'm sure you have, uh, you gained a lot of valuable experience by putting that foot forward and, and just doing a bunch of dirty work, trying to make a difference in your community. So, um, just, you know, thank you for, for having the courage to, uh, lay it all out online like that. Now, it takes a lot for people to be public like that.
Well, I appreciate that. It definitely has been a struggle and one thing that has been thrown at me is you're too young, you're not experienced. And the way I see it is we need to change the way we're looking at what is experience or what qualifications give someone the right to run for a position like that. And one of them should be having a plan and having a vision for what we want to see in the future, rather than just saying, I'm running for this, this, and this. We actually need to take the time to plan something out and go for it.
I mean, I look, I look at it like this, uh, and this is coming from, from a 56-year-old man, you know, late middle age. Uh, sorry, uh, I think, I see what I've seen for most of my life, that the older people have been in control, the older, more experienced people, right? Like they say, have been in control for how many years now? And in a lot of ways, things are not going the way the people want them to, right? So maybe it's time we give some new fresh faces and some new ideas, you know, with new ways of thinking and, and boost our, our system a little bit, I think. Cause the, the, the old ways of thinking, they're stuck in ruts is what it is, you know, most of them. I mean,
They most definitely are, and that's one thing I've heard is people aren't ready for this kind of change. They're not ready to see young people run for office and they're not ready to hear these new ideas being, being brought up to them. It does, yeah, they're used to the same old stuff over and over again and used to this fear mongering that keeps them belittled and put them in this position where they have no power, rather than hearing people who actually want to give them power and give them a voice. It's just something they're not used to.
Absolutely, well, that being said, I want to, I want to come back from, uh, we're going to have to take our sponsor break here in just a minute. But when we get back, I want to talk a little bit more about your first run and, and what you learned during that and how you're incorporating that into your second run. I think that'd be a good conversation and we'll do that right after this sponsor break. Uh, y'all be sure and stay tuned because this is going to be an interesting conversation.
Howdy, Colt Power here. These days, many people are choosing to add CBD to their wellness routine. Why? Some like CBD for how it may help them with their focus. Others enjoy the way the plant compound may assist them with their sore muscles and relaxation. For me, CBD has been a game changer in keeping my old sports injuries managed so I can work out and be present for my family. If you've ever been curious about CBD, I invite you to check out our Texas grown, Texas-made products at powerbiofarms.com. That's power B I O P H A R M S dot com.
Thrive Apothecary offers an experience truly unique from anything else in Texas. A full-service cannabis solution that is doctor-owned and offers customers every level of cannabis legally available in Texas. From traditional CBD products to emerging hemp-derived THC edibles, smokeables, and now medical cannabis. As a licensed medical cannabis provider, prospective patients from anywhere in Texas can book a sponsored online eligibility consultation to determine if they qualify for a medical marijuana prescription from the comfort of their own home. Plus, for Texas veterans, their first prescription appointment is donated by Thrive. Visit thrive-tx.com for more information.
Welcome back to the Lone Star Collective Podcast, the official podcast of the Texas Cannabis Collective, distributed on Spotify, Apple, Google Podcasts, and many more to give Texans information regarding policy, industry, and culture. And now, back to this week's show.
Back to the Lone Star Collective. I'm your host, Chris Grusolia, and I'm joined this week by our co-host, Austin Zambruri, and our special guest, Bentley Pies, who's running for Kamau County Commissioner. Now Bentley, before we went to break, I mentioned that this is your second run. Um, please tell our, our, our audience a little bit about what office you ran for initially and how successful were you in at least securing some kind of vote? And what you learned in that process and how you're incorporating that into this run?
All right, so, um, basically I formally ran for New Braunfels City Council, um, in District Five. Uh, District Five is the biggest district in, uh, New Braunfels and it also holds the second most population of Hispanics or people of color. Um, and I guess some of the things that I learned along the way were that people are very unpredictable. Uh, you could give them all the reasons that they need to get out and vote and you still gotta force them out there. Um, I started around, I'd say now it's been like 10 months ago when I officially announced my run for city council. Um, and immediately we were able to gain some support from people such as former Senator Wendy Davis, um, in groups such as Run For Something and the Working Families Party, um, along with climate activist groups such as Climate Cabinet and, um, American Youth for Climate Action. Um, but I guess a few things that I learned were, um, sorry, there's just so much. Um, I, I guess, hmm, yeah, there's definitely a lot. Um, for example, during, um, the early voting process, uh, we were expecting a lot more people to come out and vote. Um, and we got around 5% of the people from New Braunfels to come out and vote. Um, District Five definitely had a huge turnaround from formerly having around 300 coming out to vote to now having 700. Uh, so we definitely made a change in the voting numbers, but I wouldn't say I did it for my, like, I don't, I wouldn't say I, it went towards myself. Um, a lot of those people that I talked to didn't like the fact that I was so young or that I was advocating, openly advocating for decriminalizing marijuana or, um, they just didn't trust me. They said I didn't have experience or they heard from other people such as the city council members or my opponent saying I was too young and fear, pushing those fear that we shouldn't elect young people. Um, and so it was definitely a challenge. I ended up getting around 20% of the vote. Um, and I'd say those 20% were people who were constantly reaching out, um, and taking the time to actually hear what I was running for and what I stand for. Um, cause that's another thing, a lot of people will just hear one candidate's side and they won't, they won't be willing to hear the other one or even take the time to hear the differences or read the articles published about them.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's so, so much polarization today in, in the voting base. And it's, you know, the media and politicians know it and they use it to their advantage. But so many people vote based on a letter or a color, you know, one party or the other. And it's, it's insane to me, but at any rate, uh, carry on.
Um, well, to go on with that, um, how do I say it? Um, there was a lot of people who did show up to vote and they were like, oh, I heard so much about you. I saw you on Facebook or I saw your articles in the newspaper or you left a thing at my door while I hadn't my, your opponent sign up and it took courage or this and that. But it was funny because at the polling locations, people would say that and then they'd be like, but I'm not going to vote for you because your opponent's older or your opponent said you're too young or this and that. Um, and it was definitely frustrating because it takes the focus away from what you're running for to just some label that they're throwing on you. Um, I would say that I'm actually a little more experienced than my opponent was. She claimed that she had no experience in politics or creating policy or creating plans for the future. Um, one of the things that she would run on, um, which I was even for is that she's a mother and that she lives downtown. Um, but then from that she would go to, but my opponent's too young and we need someone who's older and someone who's not gonna, um, be immature or be untrustworthy. And so, I don't know, it was, it was a whole process of, uh, not really real understanding or realizing how people would vote or what might flip them. I don't know, it was, it was a lot.
Yeah, well, tell us,
I think I rambled a bit.
You, you touched a little bit there about your experience, but, but you didn't say what that is specifically. Tell us a little bit about some of the work you did with other campaigns and for other politicians in your, in your past. I mean, you've got a pretty unique history that, that kind of does give you a little more qualification than your average Joe, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, um, right before I announced my campaign for city council, I actually was working for Claudia Zapata for US Congress against Chip Roy. Um, and with that campaign, it, her district was huge. It was gerrymandered, it was spread out throughout, I'd say 10, 11 counties. Um, and that was in between Austin to San Antonio, all the way out to Uvalde, um, up to Real County. And that was us constantly driving between each of those cities in between and talking with voters who have been forgotten by their congressman. Um, a lot of those people we talked to never heard from their congressman, never talked to him, never even knew that that was their congressman. Um, and one of the ways that Claudia Zapata would run is she wouldn't focus on if you're Democrat or Republican. She'd focus on if you're a person in her community and you're in need or you're, you feel like you're forgotten. She wants to be there to represent you and share your values and beliefs with everyone else.
As it should be.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess that's one thing I was running on is not focusing on those. Like I said before, uh, finding the common ground and bridging the gaps between those, rather than focusing on the little issues that don't really affect us as much as we think they do. Um, so from that, I, I was able to talk to thousands and thousands of people across the whole country, um, hearing all sorts of stories and perspectives of how people live and how people have suffered through hard times and these laws that get passed. And, um, so it was definitely an interesting experience. And then before that, I actually worked for her Democratic opponent before the primary, um, uh, David Anderson for US Congress. Um, and I was basically, I would do like media research. Uh, he would ask like, what are the main issues going on in these counties? Um, and then we, I would go online and figure out what issues are affecting each county and how we can do something to fix those issues. Um, before that, I, um, worked for a school board campaign, um, for my campaign manager who helped me in this last race, um, Brittany Soto. Um, she, she ran, um, as the youngest person to ever run in this area. And then, um, so I helped her with that around 2020. Um, and then in between that, I worked for the, or I founded and was president of the Kamau Young Democrats, um, where we would host events, rallies, meetings, um, to try and get more young people involved. And with my time there, we were successfully able to get over 40 young people in our conservative town, uh, involved with the Young Democrats. We definitely started something and then unfortunately, because the older Democratic Party here didn't like how much momentum we were building, they for some reason found the need to shut that down.
Hmm.
Old people, man.
Old people, hey, wait a minute.
He's up now, not all old people.
Yeah, not all old people. You know, there's definitely a lot that I've ran into that have supported what us young Democrats were doing. Um, and we're definitely ashamed with the older, the other part of the party that were pushing against it. I guess it's one thing that they're pushing, um, that they want you to have their exact, uh, policy word for word and they're not willing to have any little, uh, disagreement when in reality, we should be having conversations about, well, do we, how do we want to support this? And what can we do to support that, rather than just saying, we'll support it?
Well, that's what I always say, you know, when you hear all about taking sides and this side says this and this side says this and that's set in stone and blah, blah, blah. I mean, as a country, as a population, as a people, we are the most diverse country in the world. And yet with that diversity, we all still want the same basic things out of life. Don't make a damn bit of difference what color our skin is, what country we, origin we have or claim. Uh, it doesn't matter what school we went to, what church we go to, or what store we shop at. We all want life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness and success, right? We just have different ideas on how to get there. And, and, in my opinion, our government is so set in those two-sided ways that they can't get beyond BS and do what needs to be done like they used to and hash shit out and say, okay, I want this, but I ain't giving you that. And go back and forth until, like they basically did with this, this recent, uh, debt ceiling bill, you know, the recent budget. I mean, that's basically what they did, that the two sides sat down and said, okay, uh, you're not getting that. Okay, well, if I'm not getting this, you're not getting that. And they came up with an agreement and they signed it, they passed it, it's a done deal. Why can't we do that on everything else? Yeah, nobody always gets what, yeah, nobody gets everything they want, never have, you know? But why we gotta have this mentality that we have today of,
Exactly.
We're not giving you anything you want, but you gotta give us everything we want. And that's, that's the way both sides seem to want to play it these days. But they all went off on a tangent there. What else you got?
I want Mary's true.
I was, I was going to say, you know, just to touch up on that, guys, that, um, you know, a big part of what's wrong with our politics is that we live under this winner-take-all system, right? And so, you know, you have actually a fraction of the people, you know, a candidate, you know, will get a fraction of the vote from their particular party and it's really just winner-take-all, you know, there's no compromise. And so when we don't have compromise, you just have generations of people who are used to not compromising with, uh, minority voters. And so thus, you know, when we get to, um, you know, the political dynamics between, you know, left and right and you, you tend to have this, you know, ex, kind of almost extreme, you know, version of choices. And you see very little compromise, um, on either side to, um, that act, it kind of marginalizes, marginalizes everybody in the middle. And so the, uh, you know, having, you know, having, uh, power in numbers and being able to, uh, impact, um, elections and challenge narratives and challenge the old guard and the old way of doing things, I think is vitally important in figuring out a way to, uh, exact that kind of compromise, so.
Some people are so set in stone that they're not going to work with Republicans or they're not going to work with Democrats. And that's one thing I saw here in this county, in this area, um, is people were like, oh, you're not all the way Democrat? You're working with Republicans, we're not going to support you. Oh, you're not all the way Republican, we're not going to support you. And there was a very small majority of people, obviously by the turnout of votes, that actually saw that we do need that compromise, um, while the others do see that far divide.
Absolutely.
Which is extremely unfortunate because at that point, we do not get anything done. And I think it needs to be, the message needs to be pushed that if we cannot sit down at a table and compromise, then nothing will get done.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the, the moderates or what you're, what you're, what you claim to be is a moderate. You're like middle of the road, you're not. Extreme left, you're not extreme right. And that used to be. The majority of our elected bodies. And now you're you're exactly right. You either gotta be. Hard right, hard left, or they don't want to support you. It's 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 nuts. It's just crazy. That being said, we gotta get ready to take our second sponsor break already. Flying through this here shuttle. Uh when we get back, I wanna kind of flip the table a little bit and bring it back to. Our favorite topic of cannabis and what your experience in your campaign has been with being a supporter of cannabis, how that you. Affected your campaign, et cetera. When we get back from this sponsor break. Right after this, folks.
Howdy, Cult Power here. These days, many people are choosing to add CBD to their wellness routine. Why? Some like CBD for how it may help them with their focus. Others enjoy the way the plant compound may assist them with their sore muscles and relaxation. For me, CBD has been a game changer in keeping my old sports injuries managed so I can work out and be present for my family. If you've ever been curious about CBD, I invite you to check out our Texas grown, Texas made products at powerbiofarms.com. That's power B I O P H A R M S dot com.
Thrive Apothecary offers an experience truly unique from anything else in Texas. A full service cannabis solution that is doctor owned and offers customers every level of cannabis legally available in Texas. From traditional CBD products to emerging hemp derived THC edibles, smokeables, and now medical cannabis. As a licensed medical cannabis provider, prospective patients from anywhere in Texas can book a sponsored online eligibility consultation. To determine if they qualify for a medical marijuana prescription from the comfort of their own home. Plus, for Texas veterans. The first prescription appointment is donated by Thrive. Visit thrive TX dot com for more information.
Welcome back to the Lone Star Collective Podcast, the official podcast of the Texas Cannabis Collective. Distributed on Spotify, Apple, Google Podcasts, and many more. To give Texans information regarding policy, industry, and culture. And now, back to this week's show.
Welcome back to the Lone Star Collective, the official podcast of the Texas Cannabis Collective. I'm your host, Chris Grisoya. And I'm joined this week by our co-host, Austin Samtereri, and our special guest, Bentley Hayes. Candidate for county for Kamal County Commissioner. Welcome back, guys.
Thanks for being here, Bentley.
Of course. Thank y'all for having me. Um it's been hard to find people who are willing to hear me out on what I'm running for. You hear any young people out in general, so it's good to have people who are willing to.
Young people need a voice, so.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but like, no, it's 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 vitally important that young people start not just getting active in politics as far as. You know, getting engaged in the political conversation, but actually getting out there and running for office. I I think it's imperative that we have eighteen, nineteen, twenty year olds. Uh getting out there and like really challenging the norm and challenging the establishment. And um and really giving a voice for, let's be honest, a very, very marginalized group of Americans in our country. Um who are just often overlooked because they don't vote, right? And um. And I think that if we want to see stronger voter turnout from this demographic. We need to have more representation from this demographic um to to really. Invigorate and galvanize the younger vote. And um. And so, yeah, I think that we need, I mean, I love you Bentley, but we need like a thousand Bentleys right now. Not in the car. The young, the young, passionate, uh ambitious, uh wants to make political change. Individual, uh that's that's what we need and we need that. We need like a lot of that in Texas, to be honest.
We absolutely do. Um and that's one thing that I was hoping to push for with my campaign is showing other young people that. You don't have to be an older white man, sorry. Um to, you know, run for office or have a chance to get out there in the political realm. So um I guess that's one thing I would like to share and um. You know, continue advocating for is getting more young people involved and making them. Have a a voice and getting them to a position of power where they can speak up and run for the people.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you think about it, it's kind of like the the uh. The dating game, really. I mean. Nobody wants to date a real old person, right? It's the same thing when you're talking about voting for somebody. I mean, think about it. They they it's just a psychological thing. Somebody who's younger. Is gonna look at at you and say, okay, I may be, I'm I'm interested, go and vote, you know, uh they look at. You know, I mean, you you don't realize it, but there are people out there that look at it that way.
And there's a reason why I think uh you see kind of this change. It's a slow change and it's not, it's not typically happening in a place like Texas. But um you know, I will mention uh Ocasio Cortez and her. Uh despite what you believe about her politics, her ascendancy at such a young age into the spotlight of national politics. Is due in part because of this changing of the old guard into new, young, fresh ideas. And that there is a. Uh uh a very big silent majority of of voters in this country. That are ready to make that change. They're just waiting for that candidate. They're waiting for somebody to. You know, that they can believe in. And so, yeah, it's we we are kind of at this, you know. Right now, the average age, I think, of a congressional member in in US is fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, something like that. That's old, y'all.
Average age of Americans, so.
Definitely, definitely.
I think it's actually older than that, Austin. The US.
It probably is, honestly.
The last, yeah, last I checked, it was, I think it was fifty eight. Uh I could be wrong. Um go definitely go look that up, but.
I mean, I'm just thinking about all the eighty year olds that are up there, you know, Jesus Christ.
Well, we have the one young guy, I I his name escapes my my name, my memory. Uh yes, yes, out of Florida. Um he's what? He's twenty two, something like that? Yeah, very, very young.
And he's like the youngest age you can run for that position at.
Of course, yeah, of course. Uh. How old do you have to be to run for Kamal County Commissioner? I'm just curious.
Eighteen?
Has there ever been an eighteen year old elected as a county commissioner? Do you know?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, so right, so we're trying to make history here, right?
Yeah, for my city council run, um I was at least the first person in my area to run and. Would have been the first person in my area, first eighteen year old in my area to get elected if I was. But um there's other people such as. Councilman Joe Castro in Alvin, Texas, and where he was elected at eighteen. Um which, you know, it's it's possible. We just gotta.
Yeah, it's doable for certain.
Alvin, Texas, wow, that's a. That's a place I hadn't been in a really long time.
I think I drove through there once. Back to uh the subject of cannabis. You you mentioned that you supported decriminalization and and. Little bit about people's reaction to your campaign. Obviously, you support it with saying that and the flag that's behind you there. How, tell us a little more in detail how your campaign was affected in your mind by being publicly. Supportive of the cannabis movement.
Um, so I'd say it was definitely supported because a lot of Republicans, even though they think that decriminalizing marijuana is. Um an issue that needs to be solved. Um they think it's a democratic issue, so they see. Oh, he's running for again or to decriminalize marijuana. He's a Democrat. Uh let's not vote for him or. Even the Democrats were like, oh, he's advertising or pushing for. Um unsafe change, like these older Democrats who aren't ready for that change of decriminalizing marijuana or. Having it legalized and that being the norm. A lot of them are pushing against it. Um and I'd say. It also affected um the election because how young I am. Uh a lot of people are like, oh, he's just some kid who smokes weed and wants to do it for his own benefit or this and that. When in reality, there's a lot of people who are suffering from the incarceration of marijuana and veterans who. Don't have access to it or people who desperately need it and can't get it.
Yeah, you know, I I gotta I gotta interrupt just briefly because it it boggles my mind that still to this day. That people want to talk about because your age. Oh, he's just a kid, he smokes pot, blah, blah, blah. Because every single study that has come out. About who the new cannabis consumers are in the United States, in the legal markets, in the states where. Where they can legally walk into a store and purchase whatever they want. Is over fifty five. The majority of the customer base is over fifty five. So I I'm, you know, it just boggles the mind that we're still battling that stupid ideology. It's just a bunch of kids who want to smoke pot. Sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, that that was definitely a huge challenge that we had is getting past that um that status quo. Um but it was definitely something I was pushing for and after a while I. Did a lot more research on decriminalizing marijuana. Um before I ran, I don't know if I mentioned this, but I actually started a petition. To decriminalize marijuana before. Um so we can get it on the ballot, but unfortunately, we didn't get enough signatures um. Uh mostly because it was done for about three weeks until um we realized we weren't getting any more people. But I definitely plan to push for that again. Um I guess we just gotta work on the way we're spreading the message to get it across to people. Because i- in whether they like it or not, it's affecting them. Whether they know someone who smokes that might get caught. Or they have an elderly parent who needs that to keep going. Like either way, it's affecting someone and. We shouldn't just put it towards just some kid smoking pot.
Yeah, I I would just like, you know, I would like to remind everybody, you know, people might be like, oh, what, how? How can a county commissioner, how can that impact cannabis reform? And I'll I'll tell you right now, we have a a bright and shiny example. And that is in Bell County, which where Colleen has. Decriminalized through a ballot initiative. The city has implemented the proposition and it is effective. And then you have a group of county commissioners in Bell County who are bringing a lawsuit against Colleen. To hold an injunction on the proposition. Anticipating that the Attorney General is going to bring some litigation. Um to stop this uh local referendum that uh challenges state law. And so, yes, indeed, a county commissioner can make a world of difference. And something like local cannabis reform. So uh don't be, don't be misled that, uh you know. City Council or Sheriff or County Commissioner, that these these local positions don't have any value that can be brought to changing. Having local reforms, they absolutely can, so.
That was one thing that was pushed against me many times is you can't even do anything on city council. You need to educate yourself. You don't know this or this. When in reality, it's as simple as just having someone up there to advocate for it. To get the conversation started and to get it in motion.
That's what a lot of it is, getting the conversation started. That's what a lot of it is.
That's what we noticed at Denton City Council, you know, when I was there on Tuesday and we were arguing with. Uh I wouldn't say arguing, but we were, you know, citizens were up there, uh really challenging. Denton Police and Denton Police Association. You know, by. Try, you know, we're having this conversation with members of city council that. Are continuing to bring this up and keep this on the agenda and keep it at the forefront. Um so, yeah, very much so, having individuals on your local city council. In your, you know, your local law enforcement, your. County Commissioner, I mean, you name it. These local officials have a lot of power and they have a lot of representation. And. Um being able to uh connect with them and have those conversations is really where the change begins. Um you know, we can talk all we want to about, you know, changing Senator Ted Cruz. Or, you know, some of these big names that exist on a national level. I say Ted Cruz because I think we all. I don't think, I think we all kind of have a a general feeling about Cancun Ted Cruz. No, I mean, no knock on him. I've had many conversations with his offices uh about cannabis reform, but. Um you know, getting a guy like Ted Cruz and 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 challenging him is 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 a much, much different battle and fight. That you almost have no control over as an individual citizen than your local city council member or. Your precinct county commissioner. So, you know, the.
It's a shame more people don't realize that too. Because they focused on those bigger races and they don't, they completely disregard the local races that affect them, like right there at their home.
Those city council members and those 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 uh county commissioners and whatnot. When when they contact the representatives down in Austin for for speaking for Texas. I guarantee you, they get a lot more attention than the average citizen gets. Because they're they're typically speaking for a group of citizens and that's the way they're perceived by those elected officials down at the state level. So. Yeah, those positions are extremely important. If you, it's crazy that people think they don't matter.
Yeah, and and you know, I know people are like, oh, you know, my vote for president doesn't count. Well, yeah, man, it's. I'm not saying it doesn't count, but it is a very tall, small drop in the bucket compared to your local city council member. Who two or three votes may decide the may may decide who it is, you know what I'm saying? And like. You have a lot more power in 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 that city council member. You know, he is far more beholden to you because your vote for him is. Far more consequential than your vote for the president or for a, you know, US senator. And so they are more likely. To want to engage and have conversation and dialogue. And so it's very, very important. Uh you know, I mean, this is now that we're outside of the legislature, it's very important that we direct people, well, what can I do? What can I do? Well, now it's time to start getting involved locally and learning that, yeah, that's really where your biggest asset and power is. Outside of your vote. Your biggest asset and power as an individual citizen is in your local city councils and um, you know, you just your local community in general. So.
One thing to go along with that, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Um is a lot of these people watch the mainstream media that is constantly pushing them down and making them feel. Less and less like they can make a difference. Saying we have this issue going on. Across the country or we have this issue going on across the world. And people are just sitting back like, oh, wow, the world's going to shit and we have not. We can't do anything about it. And it would be a lot easier if people realize the importance of these local races. Where they can be like, oh, wow, I actually have a say in what happens. Uh like, I actually have control of what happens in this community, like. Yeah, you just go vote for your local representative. But I guess it's something that we need to continue pushing. And I'm hoping in twenty twenty four, because it's such an important year, Senate, President, all that stuff, Congress. I'm hoping we can get a lot more young people out to vote and maybe it can change the results of this election.
Keep our fingers crossed.
It's gonna be a struggle to get those people out, but we just gotta keep trying.
Yep, absolutely. Well, I think we could uh probably carry this conversation on forever, but that's gonna pretty much wrap it up for our time on the show today. Any final words and and thoughts, Austin, before we go?
Uh no, I'm, I just would say I'm highly encouraged by, you know, I'm forty, I'm a man. You know, like I've I've spent a lot, a lot of time over the past, it seems like ten years. You know, active, you know, being an activist, advocating, being a street activist. Um, you know, doing a lot of political work. Uh and but just to see, you know, the younger generation. the younger generation um sprouting up and getting engaged and uh wanting to be uh the change that they want to see in the world, that is gives me a lot of hope for the future. Uh you know, I, like I said, after this last legislative session, it seems like every legislative session at the, at the very end, we're beating our heads against the, the wall like like, man, we're in a, you know, things aren't ever gonna change. But when you actually see the tangible proof of the change that is coming up through our youth and the activity and the energy that they're bringing, um it's man, it just makes this, this work so much more worth it because we're leaving it to this community, right? We're leaving it to this generation to carry this stick on and, and keeping that change. So Bentley, thank you so much. Y- y- you know, your, your, your words and your testimony means a lot, but really seeing your presence in your activism, in your desire to uh make a huge difference, I think that is uh speaks louder than anything that you might be able to say to anybody. So thank you.
I really appreciate that. Like I said earlier, it's been hard to find people who are willing to hear out young people. And so for you all to take the time to invite me on here, I really appreciate that.
Well, speaking of that, before we go, let everybody know where they can find your campaign, if you got a website, any of that information, spit it out there.
Okay, so if you go on Instagram, Facebook, or Twitter, you can search Bentley for the number four, Kamau County. Um or you can search Bentley Pays on Safari or Google or wherever, and it should show you a few articles or um links to some pages and, yeah. So I hope y'all can definitely go check me out if y'all haven't already.
Absolutely. And anybody in Kamau County, this is your man.
We know a few people in Kamau County. We have a lot of friends in New Braunville, so.
If you want change from the status quo, you need to vote for Pen- Bentley Pays.
I appreciate that. Thank y'all so much.
I want to thank y'all again for joining us and uh want to thank all our audience for joining us. And be sure, if you have a story like this, you have a company that you're starting out, or you're a candidate like Bentley, reach out to the cannabis collective at txcannico.com, find our, our uh scheduler there and set up a time and we'll get you on the show as well. Thanks again for joining us and we'll see you next week.